Testing, testing, one, two. Testing, testing, testing. Test, 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 test.
Can everyone take their seats, please? Okay, good evening, everyone. On behalf of Ellen and myself, we want to sincerely thank you for spending the evening with us. We truly appreciate you taking the time out of your busy night. We know that you could be anywhere else, doing anything else. So it means a lot that you choose to be here investing your time in something that directly impacts our community. Before we get started, we'd like to open up the evening with the Pledge Allegiance and National Anthem. If you're able to stand, please join us. If not, feel free to remain seated. The Pledge Allegiance will be held by my daughter Gloria Hines, a recent graduate of Southwestern College, where she double majored in Criminal Justice and Psychology. And following that, the National Anthem will be performed by Lori Rivera, a dear friend and lead vocalist with the Windjammer and Sunset Cruise Duo, which is two local bands.
All right, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. Before I go any further, I'd like to take a moment to turn the mic over to my co-host Ellen, so she can induce herself.
Hello, my name is Ellen Nash, and I'm the Chair of the Black American Policy Association Foundation. And we're so happy that you all have, as Angelica said, taken out your busy schedule to attend this forum. And I want you to give your own self-applause just for pushing through the traffic and being here. I'm going to acknowledge the co-hosts that are also in the room. I'm going to name them. It includes the API Initiative, the Black and African Women Rise Democratic Club, the Democratic Women's Club of San Diego County, Earl B. Gilliam Bar Association, Long Term Recovery Group of San Diego, the NAACP San Diego Branch, Community Advocates for Just and Moral Government, National Pan-Atlantic Council of San Diego, North County Equity and Justice Coalition, Power Up with Youth, Racial Justice Coalition of San Diego, the San Diego Black Chamber of Commerce, San Diego Latino Professionals, San Diego Young Republicans, and the Spring Valley Coalition. And Angelica, who represents the Spring Valley as Chair of the Spring Valley Chamber of Commerce. Let's give all of our co-sponsors an applause. Thank you very much. Just some housekeeping matters. Restrooms are out this door here. Women's to the right, no, to the left, and men's to the right. And if you can turn off your phones, silence them so we won't interrupt anything that occurs tonight. And thank you again for being here. We now want to introduce the moderators. Let's give our moderators, our beautiful, wonderful moderators, that have taken the time out of their busy schedule to be here. And I'm going to introduce them in this order. We have our attorney, and all are, by the way, all of the moderators are D1 residents. The attorney, Attorney Jeff Weiner. Is that right? Okay, Jeff Weiner is presently a Senior Vice President of Operations and Asset Management for a large international independent power producer that focuses exclusively on renewable energy. This is a position he's held since 2023. Prior to that, he was the Vice President of Operations for a large national renewable energy subsidiary of an East Coast utility. He was in unity for over, he's been in the utility business, excuse me, for over 20 years. And Attorney Doug Odom is a native of San Diego, growing up in southeast San Diego. He graduated from San Diego High School in 1968 and completed his undergraduate work at California Lutheran University with a BA degree in Political Science. After working for a year in an insurance company, Doug Odom started law school at Western State College of Law in San Diego, now known as the Thomas Jefferson School of Law. He obtained his JD in 1977 and admitted to the State Bar of California in 1978. He is currently the senior litigation attorney with the law firm of Oden and Green. Now I would like to introduce you to Cheryl Alethia Phelps, short for Cap. She's a D1 resident with a distinguished 35 career that has spanned the nonprofit, philanthropic, legislative, and political sectors in Washington DC, New Orleans, and her hometown, San Diego, California. She is dedicated to advancing equity and inclusion for Black Americans and other marginalized people. A skilled strategist, she is recognized for her ability to identify shared values and craft powerful, inclusive narratives to drive meaningful change. Her body of work reflects a profound commitment to dismantling systems that perpetuate injustice, isolation, and powerlessness. None other than Cheryl Alethia Phelps, which is going on. I want her to take over the show, and let's get it going. Thank you so much.
Yes, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Angelica Wallace. For those who do not know me, I am a proud longtime resident of Spring Valley. I currently serve as the President of the Spring Valley Chamber of Commerce and elected member of the Spring Valley Planning Board. I'm also a licensed realtor for the past 20 years. Tonight marks a major milestone. This is the first time candidates for a special election have ever been held here in Spring Valley. So this is a historic event. So I thank you guys for coming out here and making it an historic event. This election isn't just for D1. It impacts every district and every family across San Diego County. Decisions about housing, homelessness, the cost of living, environmental issues, and even immigration will be shaped by whoever holds this seat. So again, thank you for showing up and being engaged and for caring about the future of our community. Let's continue working together to make all District One, including Spring Valley, heard, seen, and respected. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Angelica. Thank you, Ellen. Good evening, everyone. One more time, really want to, this is going to, we're going to have a robust conversation. Good evening, everyone. All right, so thank you for joining us. As Ellen said, my name is Cheryl Alethia Phelps. I also go by Cap. It's my great privilege to moderate another BayPAC San Diego Order Education Forum, this time in partnership with the Spring Valley Chamber of Commerce and many other co-hosts whom you've heard named. I'm pleased also to collaborate with Doug Oden and Jeff Weiner in facilitating. One more, no, no, I want to get it correct. Weiner. Jeff Weiner. Thank you, Jeff Weiner, everybody. Jeff Weiner. Right, okay, I apologize. Welcome to the group. All right, and Doug Oden, too. Thank you, Doug Oden, Doug Oden. Thank you for joining me in facilitating tonight's conversation. Hello, candidates, I'm going to get to you in one second. I just want to lay some context for right now. So the purpose of this nonpartisan convening is to give D1 voters and others the opportunity to hear from the two of you, the two candidates, competing in the special election to fill San Diego County's District One seat. The San Diego County District One spans approximately 256 miles, square miles. It covers South Bay and southern neighborhoods of the city of San Diego and includes a mix of incorporated cities like your own Chula Vista, your own Imperial Beach, National City, and unincorporated communities such as Bonita, Ote, Lincoln Acres, parts of Spring Valley, we'll talk a little bit more about that, and the San Diego Neighborhoods, San Ysidro, Barrio Logan, Logan Heights, East Village, and Golden Hill. So the seat opened up, as you all know, when Nora Vargas, who had just won a second term, announced her resignation effective January 2025. And so the four-member Board of Supervisors voted to call a special election. There was a primary in April. Seventeen percent, only seventeen percent of D1 voters participated in that race, in that runoff, in that election, excuse me, leading to the July 1 runoff. And the winner of the general election will serve out the remainder of the current term, which will expire in January 2029. So what's at stake? The San Diego County Board of Supervisors oversees a budget of about $8.5 billion annually, affecting a broad variety of services like public health, housing, law enforcement, infrastructure, et cetera. It's officially a nonpartisan body. But the board is evenly split between Democrats and Republicans with two supervisors from each party. And the July 1 special election will fill that fifth vacant seat. And whomever wins that seat will play a key role in deciding measures with partisan splits. I see you smiling, John. With partisan splits, as well as shaping ambitious measures to address issues like homelessness, climate change, economic stability, and sustainability, among others. So the candidates, welcome our Imperial Beach Mayor Paolo Aguirre and Chula Vista Mayor John McCann. Welcome to you both, and thanks for joining us this evening. Really quickly, I'm going to go through the rules of the game. My job in part is to enforce those rules fairly and to ensure that you have an opportunity to hear from both candidates, the questions that we ask. And there may be an opportunity, we hope, to also ask questions that you may have been able to pose on index cards. I guess we're going to collect those at some point and curate those and ask those that we can. So the program format is this. The candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. One minute max, you don't have to use the whole minute, to respond to questions. And should there be a follow-up, 30 seconds to respond to that follow-up. This is not a debate. This is an exchange of information. We'll ask you questions, you give us your best answers. So we're also going to have a few yes, no, I don't know rounds. In those rounds, the answers to the questions are either yes, no, or I don't know. Yes. No. Or I don't know. Should you care not to share an opinion or just not have one? I don't know is going to have to cover everything that is not yes or no. There'll be a yes, no, I don't know round. Right? Everybody get it? Okay, okay. So regarding the question, BayPAC San Diego conferred with our co-hosts and local subject matter experts to compile them. None were made available prior to 5:00 PM this evening, and they were not shared with either of you beforehand. As I've already mentioned, we handed out index cards to audience members. We'll collect those, curate those, and hopefully pose a few questions. If we're not able to get to the questions this evening, we're going to send them to the candidates and also provide them an opportunity to respond to those questions. And we'll post them on the BayPAC and on the Spring Valley Chamber websites. All right, so I forgot to flip the coin. So I'm going to think of a number between 1 and 10, and I'm going to whisper it in Jeff's ear, and then you'll get a chance to pick. All right.
Go ahead.
Is it a number from?
It's between 1 and 10.
Eight.
I was a kicker in high school, so three for a field goal.
Well, the number was four. So, John, you have the option of either going first or second in the opening. And then Paloma, you'll have that option for the closing.
So what I'd like to do is I'd like to be the last one to go last at the end of the debate.
Oh, so you want to go last at the end? So Paloma, would you prefer to go first or last at the beginning for opening statements?
I'll go first.
Okay, so you'll go first for now, and you'll go first when we close. All right, I'll be keeping time. When you get to the end of your time, I'll gently say time, but I won't be on mic.
Do we get a 30-second warning?
If you don't respond, then I'll go on mic, and I'll say time.
Okay.
Okay, John? Okay. All right, everybody ready? And we'll hold hand claps and et cetera unless it's a really, 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 really good point. Okay, because sometimes you can't help it. But please feel free to express your enthusiasm for the candidates when they deliver their opening and closing remarks. It takes a lot to do this, and we're very thankful to them. So we'll kick it off. Go ahead, Paloma.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Cat. Thank you to the NAACP, to the Spring Valley Chamber, and all of the organizers for putting this event together. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to get to know you all and for all of you to get to know me. My name is Paloma Aguirre. I currently serve as the mayor of the city of Imperial Beach. I'm the proud daughter of Mexican immigrants who waited tables for a living. I'm the first person in my family to graduate college. I arrived to the region in 2001. I fell in love with Imperial Beach, with its waves and its people. And since 2005, I have been involved in fighting the cross-border sewage crisis impacting now all of south San Diego County. I have been in office now seven years. I served previously as a city council member. Very proud of the work we've done in Imperial Beach, where we'd reduced homelessness by 50% last year. We've increased the number of affordable housing in our city. And we have now secured $600 million to begin to make a dent on the biggest environmental and public health crisis in the western hemisphere. I've also helped lower utility rates as Chair of San Diego Community Power, a billion-dollar agency that serves about a million customers in the county. And I am running to be District One Supervisor because it's about time that District One gets its fair share. For far too long, we haven't had the investments necessary in our communities in District One, ranging from infrastructure to housing to homelessness to public transit to behavioral and mental health services. So I look forward to all of your questions this evening. And again, my name is Paloma Aguirre, and I'm running for District One Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. John, could you pull your mic up a little bit? Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. My name is John McCann. I'm a father, husband, Navy veteran, small businessman, and a council member and a lifelong resident. I'm so lifelong that I actually learned how to drive at Dictionary Hill here in Spring Valley. And I actually played soccer at Montavista High School, club soccer here. I'm here to be able to get Spring Valley and upgrade it. As the city of Chula Vista, as a council member and now mayor, I've had proven results. If anybody's ever gone down to the Bayfront, I was there from the beginning in 2003, a 22-year overnight success story of getting the Gaylord Hotel there. I've helped create thousands of union, high-paying jobs. And we have now a financial impact of over $475 million a year because of that project. I grew up poor. My mom was a single mom who worked at the Aurora Aircraft Factory. She raised me and my sister. And the reality is, is instead of complaining about things, I went ahead and stepped up. First, we needed good housing. For 10 years in a row, we were able to approve the East Lake Community, which became the best new home community in the county. And then lastly, my focus is going to be on Spring Valley. I have a plan. The first thing I'm going to do when I become a supervisor is I'm going to ask the redistricting to unify Spring Valley. You are a community of interest, and the idea that you are split and you're under multiple supervisors is unacceptable. You'll get better, basically, you'll get better service if you have just one single supervisor. I am committed to have quarterly meetings and bring down people who will, from the county, to be able to do that. And again, I oppose the Troy Street project for homeless. We need to fight homeless, but not with that.
Thank you both candidates. So I want to kick this off with some yes, no, I don't know questions. At BayPAC, we always kick off with this question, so we'll try it here, too. And thank you for your statements. And we're going to establish this baseline. We'll do this both for our two leading hosts. So answer yes, no, I don't know, if you don't have an opinion to offer. If elected, will Black Lives Matter in your policymaking? Yes, no, I don't know?
No.
Paloma?
Can you repeat the question, please?
If elected, will Black Lives Matter in your policymaking?
Yes.
Next question. Is systemic, institutional, structural racism a problem in our county? Yes, no, I don't know? We'll start with Paloma.
I know you said yes, no, I don't know. I'm leaning towards.
Yes.
Yes.
No, or I don't know?
But I need to consult data, so I will say I don't know at this point.
Thank you. John?
No, and I'm a mutt, and I have lived everywhere. And we, being a Navy veteran who has been in the Middle East.
Yes.
So the idea is no, she got to speak.
I don't know. That's why I gave you a little bit extra. All right, so you got your extra in. All right, next question. Are you knowledgeable about specific issues of concern raised by and/or affecting our region's Black communities that you can address as a representative of San Diego County District One? We'll start with you, John.
Yes.
Paloma?
Yes.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes. Unincorporated Spring Valley is the county's only divided area, and there are community-driven concerns like the lack of equitable resources and representation. So here are some more yes, no, I don't know questions. The first one. If elected, will Spring Valley matter in your policy decision-making?
Yes.
Yes.
That was an easy answer. Okay. Next one. Yes, no, or I don't know? Will you look to merge Spring Valley's two supervisory districts into one?
Yes, I just said that.
I don't know, because I like to hear from community first.
Thank you. Next question, and this is a full question. How will you meaningfully engage other incorporated areas like Bonita, La Presa, and Ote Mesa that often feel overlooked and underrepresented?
And that's an actual question.
That's an actual question. You've got a minute. I'll start with. Who would like to start? Thank you. McCann?
Thank you very much. I'm John McCann. I've walked the majority of Spring Valley. The two issues that I see, one again, is that the district here in Spring Valley is split. You are a community of interest, and I will ask the nonpartisan redistricting committee to look at how they can unify Spring Valley into, under one county supervisor. You will get much better service. I'm endorsed by Diane Jacob, and I'm going to work with her to learn about how we better serve you. And this is my plan. One is to see if we can get Spring Valley unified. Number two is to be able to fight the Troy Street homeless shelter. Even though it's in Lemon Grove, it is going to be extremely negatively affecting Spring Valley residents. It has a low barrier. It's close to a liquor store. It's close to a cannabis shop. That's not where you want people who are homeless, who are trying to recover.
Thank you for that question. So I look forward to representing all of the incorporated areas. That was the question. How we will make sure that they don't get left behind? First and foremost, I think Supervisor Monica Montgomery Stepp is doing a fantastic job in the part of Spring Valley that she represents. Two, I have heard from community. I have come and met with many different constituents here in Spring Valley, different groups. We had different meeting greets in different homes. And frankly, that's why I said no, I don't know. Because I've heard people who are interested in merging, and I've heard people who are not interested in merging. But I will say, I've heard a lot of need here. We don't even have sidewalks in certain areas of this community. We have a lot of unsheltered issues in the culverts. We have issues with businesses that aren't obeying the law and are not being enforced properly. So there's a lot of risks in certain areas of Spring Valley. But then Bonita has different issues as well. So I look forward to representing all of the unincorporated areas evenly and equitably. Thank you.
Good evening, candidates. Since both of you are mayors, could you please tell us what specific qualifications and records of achievement distinguishes you from your opponent in this race?
Sure, as I mentioned, I've been, well before I was elected to office, I have been fighting the cross-border sewage issue. And because of my advocacy work in conjunction with community, we've been able to secure the $600 million to upgrade the sewage treatment plant. Because of the pressures we've put on Mexico and holding Mexico accountable, we have now a new treatment plan in Mexico, removing 18 million gallons of sewage. a new treatment plan in Mexico, removing 18 million gallons of sewage from the ocean. I've also helped lower utility bills as Chair of San Diego Community Power by 5%, giving relief for hard-working families. We've also created a Parks and Rec Department in the city of Inpro Beach, which now we've upgraded all of our parks, and we offer low-to-no-cost recreational opportunities for our residents. So I have always put community first in every decision I've made as council member and as mayor, and that is the same approach and energy and urgency that I'm going to bring for District One as County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
I'm John McCann, the mayor of the city of Chula Vista. We're almost 300,000 people, 52 square miles. We are the second-largest city in the entire county. Growing up in Chula Vista, things weren't always as nice. Essentially, what I did is I've basically made sure that Chula Vista is now one of the safest cities in the entire country of the United States. And that's why I'm endorsed by the Deputy Sheriff's Association. That's why I'm endorsed by the San Diego Police Officers Association and the Chula Vista Police Officers Association. The next thing is, is that we had to be able to upgrade. Again, I helped plan and be able to approve East Lake. And the great thing is, those were master-planned communities. They were, had all the parks, all the infrastructure, all the schools planned properly. And again, you had the ability to go ahead and live all the way from people who were in the mailroom or in the boardroom. Thank you.
Should you be elected, how will you demonstrate transparency and accountability to the public and to the D1 communities specifically?
The first thing is, my plan for Spring Valley and the unincorporated areas is to have a quarterly meeting. And I will be able to bring people from the county. So it's not just to listen, it's to actually have county staff at those meetings, like a meeting here. And we will have people from Parks and Rec, from Code Enforcement, Deputy Sheriff's Office. So when people have a concern or a question, we will listen to them and get the solution started. That's the first thing. The other thing is, is that the cost of living is such a tremendous thing right now. I am going to oppose the billion-dollar tax hike proposal. I'm the only one who's gone out and said that they would do it. I oppose the sales tax. I oppose the transfer fee on housing. That's all it's going to do, is increase the cost of housing. And I'm against the mileage tax. I fought the Sandac sales tax. We need to make sure that we keep costs low. And the government is one of the main drivers in keeping the costs you have high.
Thank you very much for that question. The question was about transparency and governance. So what I will do is what I've been doing already as mayor. We have quarterly meetings, for example, with the mayor and the sheriff, making sure that we hear from community, what are the concerns that we're hearing, what are the concerns that they're facing. Another is, we hold budget workshops. We make sure that the people have ample opportunity to give their opinions on where their taxpayer dollars go. So it's incredibly important to have a community-first approach in government, because at the end of the day, government serves, exists to serve the people, the health, the safety, and welfare of the people. So putting people first is incredibly important. It's also important to give the people what they ask for, right? And the only way to do that is giving them the opportunity. Now, we've talked about how are we going to lead from District One's seat? We need to lead by making sure that the cost of living continues to be lowered, because the wages aren't keeping up, the cost of housing isn't keeping up, people are struggling to put food on their table and keep a roof over their head. And, thank you.
If elected, will you represent boldly and equitably? And what kind of leadership initiatives can the region's marginalized groups count on for you to pursue?
Thank you for that question. We need to be very clear that there are policies coming out of the Trump White House and the current Republican-led Congress that will severely impact, in an unfair way, marginalized community, especially the most vulnerable, especially in District One. District One has the lowest median household income of the entire county, the highest rate of households that are overburdened, meaning that more than 50% of their income is going to keep a roof over their head. 140,000 residents in District One depend on some form of Medicaid or SNAP. And all of those programs have been cut by the big, beautiful bill. On top of that, we have tariffs that have been imposed by the White House administration that are impacting our economy, our retirement, our CalPERS, which eventually has a trickle-down effect to our jurisdictions, including the city of Chula Vista and the city of Inpro Beach.
Hold on for one second. I just want to make sure that you answer the question and don't get us too far into partisan territory. All right? So we'll give you another 15 seconds. You need the question?
We will not talk about political parties. We'll talk about the facts. And the facts of the matter are that these programs have been cut by Congress. That's a factual statement. They have been cut on the House side. They're being considered to be cut on the Senate side. And when those two chambers come to an agreement, those cuts are going to come down our way. And we know because the county is preparing to figure out how to keep all of these vulnerable communities...
Time.
...under these very essential programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The question was, how would I be able to assist underrepresented groups? And this is something that has been some, really a strength of mine. I'm a mutt. When you go back and you do 23andMe, everything, but I'll talk about that later since I'm on a timeframe. With African-Americans, what have I done? Our police department has twice the percentage of African-Americans in, as officers, in the city of Chula Vista. And the thing is, is that unfortunately, we had Phil Cullum, who was African-American. He was our assistant chief. He was going to become the chief, but unfortunately, he died of cancer. But we also have Captain Fox, who's African-American. In regards to the Latino community, I'm the only candidate that's endorsed by the Latino-American Political Action Association, because I've been there to be able to help and make sure that everybody gets a fair shake in Chula Vista. And one of the most important things, being a Navy veteran for 25 years, we have a tremendous amount of great patriotic Americans who happen to be American Filipinos. And we are building the first Filipino-American Veteran Park in the city of Chula Vista for the entire state of California.
Okay, you get two quick yes or no, or I don't know questions. Do you have a 100-day plan? And to do what? And what would you accomplish if elected? Your first 100-day plan?
Is that a yes or no?
That's a yes, no, or I don't know.
Yes, I do. And I will try to talk to it if I, you can talk to me afterwards, because I'm obviously under timeframe.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
So we're going to ask you if you could provide one by Friday, but since you have one, we'll forego that. I'm going to move on to my partner here.
Thank you. Here's a regular question. If elected, what two to three, if any, budget items or programs would you cut and why?
I think the, I think it's short-term. Okay? One of the challenges is, right now, the county has almost $140 million deficit. As the mayor of the city of Chula Vista, we're the, one of the only cities in the entire state of California where we balance the budget with no service cuts, no layoffs, and fully funded reserves. So I'm going to go through, look at all the different departments. First, make sure that we're top funding would be public safety and health, community health services, like Medicaid, Medi-Cal. But we need to look at these other services. Like when you are in jail, you used to have to pay for your own phone calls. Now, you get free phone calls. It costs the county seven, over $7 million to do that. I believe that we should be using that $7 million for people and their health care and not for convicted criminals.
Thank you for that question. I absolutely, I'll tell you what I won't cut, is anything related to behavioral health and mental health, or Medicaid, or SNAP, anything that supports our vulnerable communities, as I mentioned earlier. And I have actually a correction. We don't have a structural budget deficit. There is a balanced budget that is being proposed at the county. It's about how do we prioritize with our values the people's dollars, the people's taxpaying dollars? And by doing, putting the most vulnerable first, making sure that our constituents that will be hurt the most by these cuts that are coming our way is the most important thing for me. We need to make sure that we don't cut any of those programs, because there's people that will either lose their lives or lose their loved ones. Thank you.
This will be a yes, no, or I don't know question. Will you support reallocating the billion-dollar budget that the county has set aside for law enforcement to be reassessed at the mid-year review of the budget? I'm going to ask that question one more time, because it's a mouthful. Will you support reallocating the billion-dollar budget that the county has set aside for law enforcement to be reassessed at the mid-year review of the budget? Yes, no, or I don't know?
I believe in fully funding our police.
So yes, no, or I don't know?
I'm trying to understand how that question is, but...
It's a little bit awkward.
Yeah, let me, let me try to clarify the question, because it's a pretty, pretty important one for that. So at the mid-year, there's an opportunity to reassess budget items, including the, our law enforcement budget, which is $1 billion. So at the mid-year, there's an opportunity to reassess that budget, that budget item.
Well, it depends upon, you know, this is hard...
It can be an I don't know, because I do think it's kind of complicated.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk about the budget all day long if you want to. I have a master's degree in economics, but...
Hold it. Let's, let's skip the question. We appreciate everyone's patience. Yes.
I didn't intentionally mean for you to skip it.
No, that's okay. We didn't, this wasn't a good question.
We're adjusting. That's fine. So the question is, do we need more funding? And if so, what are your priorities for increasing funding?
Well, I have already submitted a five-point sewage plan to the county to make sure that we address some of the critical issues that are a public health threat for our constituents in District One. We now have empirical evidence that children who are developing, their brains are developing, their bodies are developing, are being exposed to hydrogen sulfide, which is a very toxic gas. So there's a very easy solution. We need to remove a toxic hotspot in the River Valley and make sure that our children and our daycares and their schools have HEPA filters and ELPF filtration. So to your question, yes, I support my proposed five-point plan, which could vary between $10 and $18 million, to make sure that the county is putting skin in the game and not only allocating 0.02%, which is the only amount of funding they've allocated to it so far.
The county budget actually does have a structural deficit. And again, when you're looking at the budget right now, the only reason why they're saying it isn't, or you ask any budget person, but the thing is, I'm dedicated not to raid the reserve funds. The reserve funds are $700 million, and that funds the county for approximately 60 days. And if we don't go ahead and have that rainy day fund, if there's an emergency or if there is a recession, what happens is that then takes away funds to be able to go ahead and fund the police and fund health services. On the priorities, again, public safety will be my number-one priority. Number two is home health services, making sure. That is the mission of the county. And that's the thing, as a Navy officer, we need to be able to focus on the mission and not all these political projects like creating a government bank.
So here's a few more yes, no, I don't know questions. We'll start with you, Paloma. So we continue to see crumbling infrastructure across the county, but especially in neighborhoods south of Interstate 8. Would you support a policy that would prioritize completion of infrastructure improvements for communities south of I-8 prior to expenditure of funds in communities north of I-8? Yes? No? I don't know?
Yes.
Yes. That was an easy one.
Will you commit to ensuring equity in county services and that underserved communities get their fair share? These would be in infrastructure improvement dollars. Yes? No? I don't know. We'll start with you, John.
Yes. Definitely yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we get questions this time. What is your plan to improve infrastructure in D1 communities specifically?
That's part of my plan. When I walk and I've seen what happened during the flooding in Spring Valley, it was unacceptable. In the city of Chula Vista, we went ahead and made sure that we cleaned out our storm drains. We even had little R2D2s that would go down the pipes, figure out what pipes needed to be fixed or what pipes needed to be replaced. And we were very successful during those rainstorms, because we didn't lose any structures and we had no loss of life. And I will be committed, since I understand financing, especially, and this is another reason why you don't want to tap into your reserve funds, when you have people say there's $3 million in reserve funds, that two extra billion dollars is earmarked for infrastructure programs. And those infrastructure programs, if they're there, taken away from cleaning out your storm drains, filling your potholes, and putting in infrastructure in Spring Valley is unacceptable.
Thank you for that question. As I mentioned, District One has not gotten its fair share, certainly not around infrastructure. Some of the only funding we've gotten was for jail repairs in District One, and that's absolutely unacceptable. We need to make sure that District One has enough sidewalks, for example, in the unincorporated areas. I mentioned that about here in Spring Valley. We have issues here in Spring Valley, in Bonita, and other areas of the district where culverts haven't been properly maintained, which have caused flooding, like we saw in Shell Town and South Crest. We also need to make sure that we have enough infrastructure for public transit. That's a big one. A lot of our, a lot of our constituents depend on public transit. And again, we need to invest in infrastructure that will remove the toxic gases being emanated by this Tijuana River that our children, our elderly, and our immunocompromised are breathing on a daily basis. So we need to make sure that District One gets its fair share. And like I said, the only way to do that is to make sure that we put skin in the game and we fund these projects, we fund this infrastructure, we fund these needs that our constituents for so long have gone without. Thank you.
What ideals do you have for coordinating public and private... What ideas do you have for coordinating public and private infrastructure projects? Do you understand the question? Y'all look. Let me try it again.
Is that a new question?
That's a new question.
Okay.
What ideas do you have for coordinating public and private infrastructure projects?
Well, for example, one of the things that we have great need is the first and last mile traveled when we're talking about trolleys or buses, for example. And we've seen some of these pilot projects that have been funded through Sandag and through Metropolitan Transit System Agency that are small people movers, right? Like the Frank in, in downtown, and then there's one in National City. We need to make sure that we attract people with private funding that could help offset the cost to government. It's a great way for private sector to get their name out there, get their company logo out there, and make sure that we're providing a service while we meet the needs of the community by increasing those last mile traveled from public transit to the point of destination. It's a big deal. It's been successful. That's one of the ways that we can enter into a private-public partnership. Thank you.
This has been one of my specialties at the city of Chula Vista. We have been able to redevelop a lot of our older communities by bringing in investment. Again, with the Gaylord Resort, that's over 1.3 billions of dollars of investment in our community, which is not just building jobs in a resort hotel, but it's actually putting in roads and being able to take our old communities and build sidewalks and roads. We need to be able to have a great partnership with the public sector. And the reality is, we need to be business-friendly. And if people are looking at doing a billion-dollar sales tax or a billion-dollar taxes at the county, all that's going to do is drive people away, drive businesses away. And again, those proposals of those taxes for sales taxes and for housing taxes is unacceptable, and I oppose those.
Good job. Done.
The next few questions are around economic opportunities in District One. The first question, what type of economic relief programs are you planning on introducing? And how will these relief programs be distributed equitably?
Well, I'm happy to answer that question. It's one of the reasons why the Union Tribune has endorsed me as the most knowledgeable candidate that understands the Cali-Baja economy that we so depend on. The Cali-Baja region brings in $80 billion per year of trade in our region. And that helps support and uplift not just small businesses, but providers and workers, and really pumps our economy up. I'm the only candidate on this stage that has never been for closing borders because that would be incredibly detrimental to our local economy. We need to also make sure that we provide and fund programs that help uplift minority-owned businesses. It's one of the things that I've been talking to stakeholders. There's a great need around that. We need to make sure that we uplift everyone equitably. And we need to make sure that we increase wages for workers. We're talking about the biggest, the highest inflation in the nation in our region is here. And the cost of living is way too high. And unless we keep on par and we give our workers a higher pay, a higher living wage, we're not going to get anywhere. That's why unions support me, teachers, nurses, firefighters. Thank you.
What we need to do is make sure that we have a vibrant, strong business community. As a small business owner, I know what it takes because I actually sign the front of a check, not the back of a check. And the reality is, is that I'm endorsed by the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, by the Restaurant Association. All these mom-and-pops support me because they know that we're able to bring people in. What I've done is, if you buy something now, you probably buy it on Amazon, what we've done is we've pushed all the permitting, all the business licenses, everything online. So all you have to do is go online, get it done. We've been able to establish relationships to be able to help people understand the process. And again, we are in the middle of the Cali-Baja region, and we've been working together with people south of the border to be able to give them connections to the Chula Vista Bayfront, and they've been very successful, and also to our 100-acre Innovation District in Eastlake.
What policies would you champion to help young professionals and entrepreneurs thrive in our community?
Again, this is something that I've worked on specifically with our Chamber of Commerce, with being able to be interacting. We need to make sure that people understand how it is to run a business. You need to be able to bring in revenue. You need to be able to have enough revenue to cut or pay for your costs. As a business owner, I know many times it becomes very, very intimidating. People don't know what, how to run a business. But I've gone forward, making sure that everything that they need, even if it's a small business, can be there on the website. I've worked with another group called Elevate in Chula Vista, who have been very proactive at being able to allow people to come in and get trained to be able to understand how it is to a business. And just to tell you also, my son, he's a great entrepreneur, and he has created a carpet cleaning company. And we've worked with him and many of his friends to help them become business owners and entrepreneurs.
Well, again, it's about empowering, and young entrepreneurs need to have the skills, the knowledge, the resources, the connections, the networks in order to help them start their businesses. Because there's a lot of talent here in San Diego. There's a lot of talent, and we need to make sure that we give them the tools so that they can move forward and be successful. And through the county, there's a lot of ways to do that. We need to make sure that we help programs, nonprofits, so that they can teach some of these young entrepreneurs how to file for a license, how to file for a permit, how to open an account, how to do payroll, for example, how to market yourself. These are strong partnerships between private and public entities. As I mentioned earlier, it plays a really big role. Spring Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce, we need to make sure that they also have the resources so that we can help uplift all of these young entrepreneurs. Because when there's a will, there's a way. Thank you.
A few more yes, no, I don't know questions, my favorite kind. We'll start with you, John. Do you support building more affordable housing units in D1? And will you support and/or propose streamlining measures to ensure more units get built in all county districts? Yes, no, I don't know?
Yes, and I already have.
Yes.
All right. There's not enough workforce housing being built to accommodate nurses, teachers, recent grads, et cetera, you know? Should the county build more mixed-use projects where there is retail and commercial activity on the bottom floor and residential opportunities built on the floor above? We'll start with you, Paloma.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. All right, you're doing it. All right, so, since you both said yes, we'll start with you, Paloma. What are your, some of your thoughts about how to incentivize more projects like these on our, on our transit line, trolley lines, major street arteries in our underserved communities?
Yeah, infill projects are incredibly important. I'm very proud of having supported and voted in the affirmative as an MTS board member for the Palm Avenue Trolley Station project, where we have a large number of affordable housing units. We need to think creatively. The county has opportunities to partner with, for example, with San Diego City College or Southwestern College, or other institutions that are within the district. And the county actually has an innovative housing fund that helps fund some of the gap funding if developers can make it pencil out because of providing affordable housing units. So it's incredibly important to have skin in the game as a county entity, work with developers, both for-profit and nonprofit developers. There's a lot of great ones out there. I'm very familiar with them because I've been working with them for the last three years through the Coastal Commission. And as in my role as mayor, we've actually approved a 50-unit senior center in Imperial Beach. So lots of opportunities in that area of discussion. Thank you.
This is my expertise. In the 90s, I was on the Planning Commission four times as a council member and then as mayor. Currently, right now, the county is not building hardly any housing. And the reality is, is that's hurting our people who want to basically live either rental or homeownership. As the mayor of the city of Chula Vista, I do two main things. One is, is that we created affordable home ownership opportunity. Everybody wants to live the American dream. And we went ahead and were able to rezone commercial area. Originally, the developer wanted to put in apartment complex, and I said, no. And they said, why not? And I said, because I want people that are nurses, that are firefighters, that are police officers, to be able to actually live in the city that they work in. We were successful. 277 units, and then back in Citrus Bay also, we got additional units there.
Yes, no, I don't know. Should rural areas of the county be zoned to include low and moderate-income housing?
No.
Yes.
What reforms would you support to increase housing supply for middle-class buyers, including zoning changes and any red tape that you think should be cut?
Well, I think that streamlining the permitting process needs to be taken a second look at at the county. We need to also make sure that we work with, like I mentioned earlier, both for-profit and nonprofit developers to make sure that we have options available. I am proud of the work that we've done in the city of Imperial Beach. Like I said, we have built a senior 50-unit senior center, also one with 25% affordable housing and a park component. So we need to think outside the box when we're talking about opportunities for homeownership, for the middle class, for the workforce, for low income as well. Because right now, you have to make $275,000 annually to be able to own a home or to purchase a home. And very few people, especially in District One, have the ability to do that. Yes, the American dream is quite wonderful, and we all want to get to that, but we won't be able to get to that if we don't offer options that are actually attainable for the people who live in our district. Thank you.
The University of Point Loma did a study. 40% of the cost of new housing is government. If you were able to cut that in half, you would have more affordable ownership. There's a thing called the missing middle, people who are in their 20s and 30s. When I was a youngster, my mom was a single mom. And when we went out, we had to put pennies and coins in a jar to be able to pay for the gas. And the reality is, is that we need to give the same opportunity to everybody by being able to have affordable home ownership opportunities. We want all sorts of housing, but I want people to grow up in District One that have the opportunity to have the American dream.
Okay, we're moving to another area, immigration. And this is a yes, no, or I don't know question. Will you support future county economic relief and protection for undocumented families and mixed-youth families who have been left out of other relief programs? Yes, no, or I don't know?
Yes.
No.
Next yes or no question. Would you support and advocate ending all voluntary transfers from police to federal immigration authorities unless it is pursuant to a judicial warrant or otherwise required by law? Yes, no, or I don't know?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Would you support and advocate ending all voluntary transfers from police to federal immigration authorities unless pursuant to a judicial warrant or otherwise required by law?
So support ending all voluntary... Yeah, I'm sorry, it's just not clear.
There is, there is a law, a state law called the California Values Act, SB 54, which prohibits cooperation between federal immigration authorities and local law enforcement, except in certain instances. This question pertains to that. And the question is asking, do you... Well, ask the question again, so I'm not paraphrasing.
I'll try it one more time. Would you support and advocate ending all voluntary transfers from police to federal immigration authorities unless pursuant to a judicial warrant or otherwise required by law?
So to clarify that, it's asking, do you support ending that, meaning that law, local law enforcement can voluntarily turn over people to federal immigration authorities? Would you support ending that? And again, state law, SB 54, does prohibit cooperation between federal immigration authorities and local law enforcement.
I support state law.
Is that a yes or a no question?
Yes, no, or I don't know? That sounds like an I don't know. That's okay. You can be I don't know.
I, I'm going to say no because I oppose the county's sanctuary policy.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're going to move on from it, simply because we've got several more and not much time, but I am, I am going to make sure that that question is provided in writing so that everyone can see it and see what the law is as well, and then get the responses, since it's confusing.
I have a much simpler yes, no, or I don't know question. And here it is. Do you believe climate change is having sustained negative consequences for our region? Yes, no, or I don't know?
Yes.
Great. Here's an open-ended question, since you both answered yes. What policies will you support or propose to address this crisis?
So just to tell you, I have been an early adopter at solar panels. My wife and I, when we bought our house in the early 2000s, went ahead and put on solar panels. We're actually on the second wave of solar panels. I essentially, again, when I fought in the Middle East, one of the issues was when you had to get fuel from bases to bases, they would attack us with IEDs. So we looked at how we could do as much solar power at the base as possible. And so I'm a solar... Can I have that person right there putting his eyes there? I think you're trying to distract me. What are you doing? You can't see? Do you want to sit up closer then, or?
Let's just keep going, John. Keep going.
Okay. The reality is, is that what we need...
Let's, uh...
Let's take a break there.
Okay, if I can have... Okay, if I can have my time back, that would be good?
Let's take a break here.
Because you were making, you were waving at me and making...
Please stop. John, please stop.
You were making adverse...
John, please stop. Just stop. Everybody take a breath. All right. We're going to give you 30 more seconds.
Okay. So again, I believe what you need to do is, again, it's really funny, because I was an early adopter also in electric cars. We went ahead and had a Honda Fit, which was a new car. And then I was able to get a Tesla. At first, all my conservative friends attacked me for getting Tesla. And then lately, all my liberal friends are now attacking me for having a Tesla. So I'm just in the middle. I just have a Tesla, and I like it. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. So the county, we need to do our part in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and lowering the effects of climate change, which are very real. We're being hit in many different ways. We're being vulnerable to wildfires. We saw what happened in Los Angeles, which was quite devastating and heartbreaking because lives were lost. We need to make sure that we continue to build where it makes sense and not into wildfire-prone areas. We need to make sure that when we do develop, you know, housing projects or communities, that we have defensible spaces, meaning that we don't have those wildfires impacting these communities. It is why the firefighters, the county firefighters, have endorsed me, because they know that I understand the risks of wildfires. We also have sea level rise happening. So it's incredibly important that we continue to update and keep on top of our climate action plan. We need to also invest in public transit so that folks, especially young people, can get to work and to school. We need to make sure that we don't continue to increase our vehicle miles traveled. So thank you.
What are your priorities for addressing environmental justice in District 1, especially in pollution burden communities near the border and industrial zones?
Thank you for that question. So I've talked a lot about this, but it's incredibly important for us to discuss and acknowledge that we have the biggest environmental injustice happening in our nation. That doesn't even, Flint, Michigan, doesn't even come close to what we're experiencing. The people of District 1 are being pummeled by viruses, bacteria, parasites, chemicals that are carcinogenic, that are impeding the development of our children. On top of that, we have maritime emissions impacting the people of National City. We also have the environmental injustice that we saw with the people of South Crest and Shell Town, who didn't have their culverts maintained, and that they continued to defer maintenance on that infrastructure maintenance that ended in very real consequences. And not to mention, we have the busiest border crossing in the world, where we're constantly being exposed to emissions like particulate matter. So we have a lot of environmental justice issues in District 1. I have dedicated the last 20 years of my life fighting for the people of District 1 in the environmental justice space, and you better believe that that's going to be a priority for me. Thank you.
I believe that it's here to be able to act locally, and that will affect you globally. The reality is, is by making sure that we streamline the process, which I've done at the city of Chula Vista, to put solar panels on your facility. We've gone through the entire city of Chula Vista, and almost every building we've had, we've been able to successfully put solar panels on there. We made sure that we worked with the Chula Vista Chamber of Commerce and local businesses to be able to give them incentives, to be able to put in not just fluorescent lights, but the higher energy or less energy usage lights, and to be able to do these additional packages that will save them water, save them electricity. And it's a win-win situation, because we're able to give citizens the opportunity to pay less, but also to help the environment. And that's what I'll do at the county.
All right, we're going to move into another area of law enforcement. Equal justice advocates here nationwide are calling for greater oversight, greater accountability, and greater investment in community-based, non-law enforcement alternatives. We have a quick yes or no, or I don't know response for you good folks. Do you support reviewing the duties and responsibilities of San Diego County law enforcement departments and reallocating funding for those duties and responsibilities deemed more appropriate for non-law enforcement entities? Long question, wasn't it?
No.
Okay.
So your question, just to be very clear, your question is, do I support moving funding from law enforcement to alternative policing programs or alternatives?
Yes.
I think that's a false equivalency, because I think you can do both. So my question would be no.
Is it a yes or a no answer?
So be no. All right. Thank you. Do you support community organizations and their staffs be trained to become first responders instead of law enforcement officers in certain situations?
No.
Yes.
Have you and/or will you accept campaign contributions or endorsements from any police union or other law enforcement association? Yes, no, or I don't know?
Yes, I already have.
Okay.
Yes.
And what will you do to ensure that mental health professionals can respond to more calls during more hours and take much greater care, much greater load of the mental health emergency calls? That's an open-ended question there.
Thank you very much. The county board of supervisors over the last several years has essentially advocated the role of homelessness to the cities. As the mayor of the city of Chula Vista, I've taken on the lead to be able to do that. At the city of Chula Vista, we created the Homeless Outreach Team, a HOT team, and it's a collaboration of not only our police, but it's also nonprofits and PERT clinicians, who are actually certified. We created a homeless outreach, basically a facility that is a tiny home, or a facility. It has a high barrier, so you have to be clean and sober if you're going to go in there. We've had hundreds of people go ahead and graduate. And we've been a regional leader, Imperial Beach, National City, Chula Vista, throughout. People have gotten off the streets and into the Chula Vista tiny homes shelter and been able to be successful. And the thing also is that we have protected our children and our local businesses. And whenever you're doing something with homelessness, you need to make sure that if you have a facility, it's not going to be next to a neighborhood, or it's not going to be next to a cannabis shop or an alcohol shop, because that all is going to do is make it unsuccessful.
Thank you. The question was around mental health crises and responses. So we need to invest in more psychiatric emergency response teams, the PERT program. We need to make sure that we invest more in crisis civilization units, because far too many lives have been lost because somebody was having a mental health crisis and use of excessive force was conducted. So we need to make sure that we have staff that are well-prepared, well-trained, that can answer these types of crises. It is not necessarily the cause or correlated to homelessness. Yes, people in homeless, in an unsheltered situation may be experiencing as well a mental health crisis, but it's not necessarily the cause. So we need to make sure that we empower these programs, that we invest in these programs, so that we don't have a tragedy happening from somebody that might have been autistic and had a psychiatric breakdown, that might be scared out of their mind, and then ends up being, you know, in a tragedy or a tragic situation. So the county has a very clear role to play. We need to make sure that we put skin in the game and that we address the mental health crisis that is impacting our communities. Thank you.
We have a candidate, we have an historically high rate of in custody deaths, and our jail conditions continue to be among the worst in the state of California. If elected, how will you improve oversight and conditions in county jails while ensuring public safety remains a top priority?
So we were talking earlier about transparency, right? That's what we need. We need more transparency. We have the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board, or the CLRB, which provides oversight and accountability to what's happening in our, with our sheriff's department and in the jails. It is absolutely unacceptable, the number of deaths that we've seen in our jails. And I know that Sheriff Martinez has been working towards making a change, but that change doesn't happen overnight. We need to have a lot more well-trained medical personnel so that they can easily and readily identify if somebody's coming in with a pre-existing condition or under the effects of drugs. So we need to make sure that we give them the authority to provide that oversight, as well as providing better-trained, highly-trained personnel at the jails, so that we can, once and for all, zero out that number, because that is absolutely unacceptable. Thank you.
As a county supervisor, what I'm going to do is make sure that we're funding more to hire more guards. I've communicated and worked with Sheriff Martinez. The reality is, we need to be able to pay our guards more money, our deputy sheriffs more money, to be able to track more people. They are understaffed right now, and as anybody knows, if you're in the military, if you're in any situation like that, if you don't have the right staffing, then things unfortunately get dropped. And the reality is that Shelley Martinez, or, excuse me, Kelly Martinez, the sheriff, she's actually been able to put in some safeguards and has decreased the deaths by over 40%. But we need to continue on that trend and making sure that we're fully funding our deputy sheriffs and our guards.
Okay, let's move on to another topic, which is pretty much in the news today. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is a controversial subject for some, but would you each describe to you what diversity, equity, and inclusion means to you?
That's a great thing. I grew up in Chula Vista, and I always tease people that we were a diverse area before we even knew what diversity was. I grew up with a Filipino community, with African-Americans, Hispanics, and we all got along well together because we were all Americans. When I fought over in Mosul, Iraq, it was amazing, because one of the things I did was we put together projects to get the Iraqis that were between 16 and 30, give them jobs so they wouldn't join the insurgency. And I remember, they were fascinated, because I would be sitting there getting things done, and then one of the other officers would come over, and we would be talking, and we'd be basically getting things done, and then he'd leave, and then through the interpreter, they'd go, hey, how can you be friends with that individual? And I go, well, you know, one fight, one team. We're all Americans. We're all treated equally. We all have the same rights. And they go, they couldn't believe that I worked very successfully and had a friend who actually had to be an African-American. But again, it was one team, one fight. We were all in the United States.
Thank you for that question. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is what makes this nation great. And the reality is, currently, we have policies coming out of the White House that are seeking to erase diversity, equity, and inclusion, especially in language that we're seeing. There's being funding that's being cut from any institution, organizations, or programs that have diversity, equity, and inclusion language in their policies. We're seeing nonprofits struggle because they won't be able to receive funding from the federal government because of DEI. And DEI is incredibly important, because I kid you not, there's policies that are being considered where maternal funding, funding for maternal services, has to not have the name, the word woman in the language. And that's absolutely unacceptable. We need to uplift the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our county, because it's what makes us rich as a community. And that means including this in our language, in our policies, making sure that nonprofits and institutions receive the funding that is necessary, including our brothers and sisters that are LGBTQI+, our immigrants, and all the different communities that make the rich diversity of our district. Thank you.
How will you ensure equitable representation for D1's diverse communities, particularly working-class Latino, Black, AAPI, and immigrant residents?
You need to put your values where your mouth is, really. So I have committed this before in the many candidate forums that I've participated in before the primary, where I've committed to making sure that we have that same diversity that our district holds in my team when we put together the District 1 team. So making sure that we have representation from all the different minorities that represent our district, whether it's Latino, Black, AAPI, LGBTQ+. We need to make sure that our community sees themselves represented in their officials in government, and that's the way to do it. It's incredibly important to walk the walk and not just say that you appreciate DEI. Thank you.
You know, it's interesting, as a council member and then the mayor, I got somebody who came over to me, he was a reporter, and actually goes, what's the deal? All your staff members are Latino. And I go, I didn't notice that. They do a great job. And the reality is, we need to make sure that people do a great job, are hired, but by making sure that we are out in District 1, whether it's over in Shell Town, whether it is in Sanya Seidro, whether it is in Ocean View Hills, we need to get somebody who understands that community and works with that community. I was at a meeting at Jackie Robinson's Little League the other day, and again, I want to make sure that we are representing the people there. But the reality is, I want to make sure that they do the job first, do a good job, and then we get people in that community that are successful. Thank you.
Okay, one more question. What is the best way to diversify the composition of the numerous county boards and commissions to better reflect the diversity of the region?
Well, you bring more diversity to them. You need to make sure that there's representation from all the different sectors that that board or commission has a mandate to represent. If it's behavioral health, for example... If it's behavioral health, for example, we need to make sure that we have somebody who's from that community qualified with that medical training and expertise, or somebody who has a lived experience as it relates to behavioral or mental health issues. So the same thing with all the different boards and commissions. If we are talking about child, children welfare and services, we need to make sure that we get somebody who's actually a parent, or somebody who has the experience of providing services for children. So it's very important, it's a very thorough process, but I think that the way that you do it is you tap into the communities, you make sure that you get candidates that are well-qualified, and then appoint someone that actually has that lived experience, technical expertise, and that could bring that professional experience to the table. Thank you.
District One has over 600,000 people, and I believe that we need to make sure that there is an appointment, if there isn't an appointment, we select somebody from that District One. And with 600,000 people, you're going to be able to find a good diversity, you're going to find people who are qualified. But the biggest thing is, I want to make sure that we have somebody who cares about the community and is vested in the community. Many times, as the mayor of the city of Chula Vista, we have to look at different people, and every once in a while, we get somebody we appoint, they don't show up to the meetings, they aren't really caring about it. We want somebody who really cares about what they're doing and really loves their community. And again, we will work there with people to make sure that every area is represented, and it shouldn't just be the wealthy areas like La Jolla and Del Mar. We need to make sure that the South County is represented, and that's what I've done at the city of Chula Vista. Again, we were always considered this not very nice community, but this is Chula Vista's decade, and we are now a nice community.
A top concern of San Diego County residents is homelessness. Please answer the following questions with yes, no, or I don't know, if you don't have an opinion to offer. Do you believe that there are root causes of homelessness? Yes, no, I don't know?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you support mandated treatment for addiction and mental health services?
Yes.
No.
This will be an open-ended question. If elected, what steps would you take to expand on the county's homelessness prevention efforts and make them more effective?
Again, I've been a regional leader on getting homeless off the streets. I think in Spring Valley, that is one of the major issues that is affecting the community here. And what we need to do is not just give somebody a voucher so they can spend the night at a hotel. What we need to do is be able to get down and find out what is really wrong with them by putting together a homeless outreach team and being able to bring them in. One of the things that we've done is, again, homelessness is not a one-size-fits-all. There are drug addiction, alcohol addiction, family issues, mental issues, and a combination of all that. You need certified clinicians, PERT clinicians, and then being able to bring them into a facility which has wraparound services. And the county needs to do a better job, because they received, over the last year, billions of dollars to decrease the homelessness, and they've done just the opposite. They have not found good long-term solutions, and that's why I will do as a county supervisor, search for long-term solutions, not just getting them, basically having them continue to be on the streets.
Thank you. I'm very proud of the track record that I have as mayor of the city of Imperial Beach when it comes to homelessness. We have been able to reduce homelessness by 50% just last year alone. Now, we do need to make sure that we're spending our funding for homelessness in an effective and efficient way. So we need to take a second look at the providers. Are they providing the oversight that is necessary? Are they making sure that the folks that are in the housing are receiving the services that they need? We also need to invest in an outreach program that is effective. It already exists, by the way, a homeless outreach program. It already exists. In Imperial Beach, the big difference that we've made is that that outreach team or task force has multiple contacts on a weekly basis, building a relationship with the unsheltered individuals, building that trust, so that if they want to enter into treatment, if they so choose, and if it's the best solution for them, then we go ahead and make sure that we provide those services and/or connect them to existing services. Simple things, like having the ability to receive your identification if they lost it while they had their stuff taken away. We've provided a PO box where they can receive that ID and actually apply to programs. We can't force programs on people. We need to do the work. We need to build a trust so that they, by their own will, can come into programs if necessary and if that's what they need. But it's also very important to recognize that we can't talk about homelessness without talking about housing, and we need to provide housing that people can afford so that they don't end up on the street in a homeless situation. Thank you.
Next question. What is your position on the tiny homes for the region's homeless population, especially in unincorporated areas?
So in general, I think it's important. It's important so that we provide temporary housing, so that we can get people back on their feet and into permanent housing. It's important. That's what we've been doing in the city of Imperial Beach. We not only connect them with services if they so choose and need, but we also reconnect them with family members or into permanent housing opportunities. Having the ability to access tiny homes is important, and it's a way that we get them to get back on their feet and into a situation where they can be reintegrated into society in a positive way. So it depends where you locate these services and tiny homes. Absolutely, there's got to be, you got to do the work, you got to do community outreach, you got to get feedback, you got to make sure that the center or tiny home center is compatible with wherever you're considering placing it. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but I think it's absolutely positive. Thank you.
I oppose the Troy Street Shelter. It is in the wrong location. Again, it's by a cannabis store, it's by an alcohol store, so I oppose that. And again, this is something that happened to me. When I grew up in Chula Vista, my parents, my friends and my parents would get wealthy, they would move away, and we were always sort of considered not a very nice community. And many times, Chula Vista and the South County would just get dumped on. I believe that Spring Valley is getting dumped on, and I'm going to be there to protect you and make sure that you guys are protected and that we don't suddenly have all these homeless facilities and homeless come down here and have it a draw for Spring Valley. We need to be upgrading Spring Valley, upgrading our area, and again, if you want to look at the whole county, we need to make sure that we're protecting the South County and not getting dumped on.
Thank you. We are actually quite near the end, and, audience, thank you so much for your attention and your patience. I know we have gone over time, but the questions have been really interesting, and we've got a stack of them from you. We're only going to ask a few, but we are going to submit them to the candidates for them to respond by Friday. Okay, these are yes, no, I don't know. Will you commit to rezone areas of industry away from apartments and housing?
Yes.
Will I commit to rezoning areas of industry away from?
So they're separate?
Yeah.
Next question. Will you commit to performing a study in Spring Value about why cancer rates are so high?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. There are dispensaries in both of your cities. Will you vote to allow dispensaries in unincorporated areas?
Yes.
Yes.
So we've come to the end of our time. Thank you. Together, we are going to take closing statements, starting first with mayor of Imperial Beach, Paloma Aguirre, followed by mayor of Chula Vista, John McCann. Thank you. Two minutes, yes.
Well, I want to thank the moderators. Thank you for doing such a great job and helping us understand the questions. I want to thank the people of District One, Spring Valley, and everybody who joined us tonight to get to learn about us. I am Paloma Aguirre again. I'm the mayor of the city of Imperial Beach, and I'm going to be the next county board of supervisors representing District One. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to make sure we uplift the working class by providing better wages, making sure we lower utility bills, making sure that we increase housing affordability at a time where cost of living is so high. And you better believe that we're going to make sure that we eliminate, once and for all, the biggest environmental and public health crisis in the Western Hemisphere, which is the Tijuana Sewerage Crisis. I look forward to working collaboratively with all the stakeholders, especially here in Spring Valley, in Benita, in Lincoln Acres, where a lot of these communities have not gotten their fair share. There's a lot of need here in Spring Valley, a lot of need in Benita, but a lot of need in all of District One, and I'm going to make sure that District One finally gets its fair share. Thank you.
I'm John McCann. I'm here to be able to help you in Spring Valley. I have a plan to be able to make sure that we get homeless off the streets in Spring Valley. I'm here to be able to make sure that we upgrade infrastructure in Spring Valley. So if you have another rainy day where it's really, really bad, that you're not going to have what happened before, where you're going to have houses that are flooded, I'm going to be able to help redevelop the commercial areas. I'm going to fight the Troy Street homeless project, because that's only going to attract homeless people into this community and only lower the value of your homes. I am going to fight the billion-dollar tax increase, because that's going to increase your cost of living. And the reality is, I have proven results. I've been able to bring in good, over 1,000 affordable homeownership opportunities in just the last couple of years, and everybody wants the American dream, and everybody should and deserves the American dream. I will be a tax fighter, I will create good jobs, and I will make sure our streets are safe. I am endorsed by the Deputy Sheriff's Association, the Chula Vista Police Officers Association, and the San Diego Police Officers Association. I humbly ask for your vote to become the next supervisor on July 1st. Thank you.
Just a second. Thank you. I'm going to kick the program over to our hosts, but before that, candidates, thank you for your time and your participation. We look, candidates, we look forward to receiving your 100-day plans by Friday, June 27. We will send you the questions, the remaining questions for you to complete, and we'll post those on the Bay PAC and Spring Valley Chamber website in the order received. Thank you, audience, for your careful attention. For those of you who live in D1, thank you in advance for voting in this critical election. I'll now turn the program over to our hosts.
Well, thank you guys for coming out. We really appreciate it. This is a very special election. I just want to encourage all of you guys, if you haven't voted already, to go ahead and cast your vote. If you're not registered to vote, to please, it's not too late, you still have until July 1st to register. So please go ahead and make your vote count and vote. That's all I'm asking, to make a choice and vote. Your vote does count. And I just want to thank also everyone again for being here, our cosponsors. This was a great event. And the moderators as well, and the two candidates. Thank you again for coming out and supporting this event and giving the D1s what they needed.
And I'll stick around if anybody would like to talk. Thank you.